All right. Good afternoon. Let's come to order and go on the record, please. I'm Charlotte Mitchell, the Chair of the North Carolina Utilities Commission. And joining me today by way of WebEx are Commissioners Jeffrey Hughes and Floyd B. McKissick. I now call for hearing docket number W. 354 sub 384 in the matter of the application of Carolina Water Service Incorporated of North Carolina for an adjustment of rates, charges, and tariffs applicable to service in North Carolina. Before we proceed further, and as is required by the State Government Ethics Act, I remind members of the Commission of our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and inquire at this time as to whether any member has a known conflict with respect to the matters coming before us today. All right, the record will reflect that no conflicts have been identified, so we'll proceed. On July 2nd, 2021, Carolina Water Service filed an application with the Commission seeking authority, excuse me, to increase its rates for providing water and sewer utility service in all of its service areas in North Carolina. Along with its application, Carolina Water Service filed the testimony of expert witnesses Deasendis, Denton, Drennan, Hill, Parks, and Schellinger supporting its request to raise rates. The intervention and participation of the public staff in this rate case proceeding is recognized pursuant to North Carolina general statutes and the Commission's rules. The public staff is the consumer advocate and represents the using and consuming public, that is, the company's customers. During the course of this rate case, the public staff will conduct an extensive audit of the data underlying the company's request and will make its own independent recommendations to the Commission regarding the company's requests to increase its rates. On October 8th, 2021, the Commission issued an order scheduling investigation and hearings, establishing intervention and testimony due dates and discovery guidelines, and requiring public notice. The order scheduled two public witness hearings to be held remotely on this date and an expert witness hearing to begin on December 7th, 2021. That brings us to today. The purpose of today's hearing is to hear from the company's customers regarding their concerns with the company's requests in this case or with the quality of the service that the company provides them. Before we move on, I'd like to discuss the procedures that will follow for this hearing today, and I urge each of the witnesses who plans to testify to listen carefully and abide by these procedures. First, public witnesses will be appearing by audio connection only. Commissioners and attorneys will be appearing by video and audio connection. Any public witnesses that wish to view a live video of the proceeding may access it on their computers by way of YouTube, which is linked from the Commission's homepage. However, be sure to mute your computer when you're called to testify to avoid feedback and interference with the audio on this WebEx. This hearing is being transcribed by a court reporter, and it's critical that we limit all interference with her ability to hear me and those who are testifying. So unless you're providing testimony, please stay on mute. Our WebEx administrator will mute you if you inadvertently come off mute. Public witnesses will be called on to testify in the order that you all have called in. When it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted by our WebEx administrator. You'll hear two beeps on your telephone line indicating that you have been unmuted. At that time, I'll ask the witness to state his or her name. And to ensure that this hearing runs as efficiently as possible, please pay close attention during the course of the hearing and be ready to respond as soon as you hear those beeps of muting your phone line. Once a witness states his or her name, I'll ask that you affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth. And once a witness gives that affirmation, the attorney for the public staff will ask the witness to provide his or her name and address for the record. After the witness has done this, the witness may proceed with his or her remarks. Our hearing ends no later than 4:30 this afternoon or earlier if we've heard from all witnesses by then or before then. Each witness will have two minutes to testify, given the number of witnesses that have registered to speak today. Counsel for the parties and commissioners may ask questions of the witnesses. This means that if you participate as a public witness, you may be asked questions by counsel for the parties or by the commissioners. All right, with that, we're ready to begin. I now call upon counsel for the parties to announce their appearances for the record, beginning with the applicant.
I'm Joanne Sanford, appearing on behalf of Carolina Water Service, Inc. of North Carolina. Joining me today in the participant panel, a participant list, are Don Denton, State Vice President of Carolina Water, and several of his senior associates, Phil Drennan, Matt Schellinger, Deb Clark, Dana Hill. We realize we are not able to answer customers' questions today. This is for them to speak, but we want to say to the Commission and to customers that we will be freely available to contact customers after the hearing is over if that is useful to try to deal with their complaints in the way that we would be able to do if we were in the live session setting instead of the virtual. With me also are Kay Pachus and Mark Alson of the Ice Miller Law Firm in Indianapolis. They have been admitted pro hoc v. Che into this proceeding. Mr. Alson and I will divide up the witness responsibility over the course of the afternoon and the evening. I will go first, and we will let you know when we're switching off to Mr. Alson. Same procedure this evening, except in reverse, he will go first. With that, we thank you and the customers for the opportunity to hear from them today, and I will yield.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sanford and crew. Public staff?
Yes, Your Honor, John Little, Staff Attorney for the Public Staff. Appearing also today is William Grantmeyer, Attorney for the Public Staff, and Winashay Maga Aria, Staff Attorney with the Public Staff, and Lindsay Darden, Engineer with the Public Staff Water Division.
All right, good afternoon, and thank you, Mr. Little. All right, counsel, any preliminary matters that we need to address before we begin? All right, I'm not hearing any. So one final comment from me about procedure. We will, it's about 1:40 right now. We're about to get started with our first witness. We'll go for about 90 minutes, and we will take a break for our court reporter. At the 90-minute mark, we'll take about a 10- or 15-minute break, and then we will resume with the witnesses. All right, so with that, Ms. McCoy, would you please unmute the first witness?
Yes.
All right, would you please state your name?
Jan Bennett.
All right, Ms. Bennett, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Little, the witness is yours.
Ms. Bennett, would you tell us your address, please?
154 Setti Lane in Brevard, North Carolina.
And are you a Carolina Water customer?
I am.
And what subdivision are you in?
I am in Conestee Falls.
And what would you like to tell the Commission today?
I would like to tell them that the Carolina Water Service should not be granted an increase in water prices. It has not been shown to be warranted. Carolina Water Service already charges more than many other services, and I do have information to support that. Carolina Water Service already receives a substantial mandatory water base, and it also receives a substantial wastewater base charge. However, it does not stop there. It also receives, Carolina Water, a hefty water system improvement fee. And yet, more money is wanted, and we have had frequent water main breakages, which cause disruption of lives, which cause inconvenience. You have to boil water after, so there's an element of danger there. This has happened over and over again, and yet more money is wanted. Another thing, too, is that, for me, for instance, I pay $123.38 a month. I live alone. I wash once a week my clothes, my dishwasher, whatever. I take showers at the gym. There are many who are on fixed income, and this constant increase in fees is just unconscionable. I think that a reasonable amount of working capital, profit, whatever, is fine, but this seems to be constant, and they are already getting a water system improvement charge over almost equaling the water base charge, and let's see on the wastewater. So they need to use the funds that they've been given, that they've gotten through these past meetings, to improve the quality of service before they ask for anything else. There are many here who feel this way. I did not realize at the beginning, when I called in, the lady did tell me then, but then it was a little late to get a hold of other people, that I could have represented the whole Conestee Falls area, because there are many upset people. It keeps going up and up and up, and the service is better.
You have reached the two-minute mark, so please conclude your statement, please, ma'am.
I thank you very much for letting me speak. It's very important to us people, because we want to make sure that we are heard against the big companies. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bennett. Let's see if there are any questions for you from the company?
All right, no questions.
All right, and from the public staff?
No questions.
All right, any questions from commissioners? All right, Ms. Bennett, there are no questions for you this afternoon. Thank you very much, ma'am, for your participation, and you may be excused. All right, John, would you please unmute the next witness?
Hello?
Would you please state your name?
James Taylor.
James Taylor, all right, Mr. Taylor. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, Mr. Little, the witness is yours.
Mr. Taylor, would you please tell us your address and whether or not you're a Carolina Water customer, please?
Yes, my address is 151 Cascade, Boone, North Carolina, and yes, I am a customer.
What subdivision are you in?
Hound Beers.
And what would you like to tell the Commission today?
Yes, I'm a 67-year-old, and I hope to retire soon, but I am very worried about how I'll be able to afford these essential services, given the monthly cost is already very high. And if this rate increase passes, the cost of these essential services obviously would be even higher. Please consider, I do live alone. I wash dishes once a week. I wash clothes once a week and shower every other day unless I get dirty. I do not water a yard or wash my car at home or water for anything other than personal needs. My current water and sewer bill from Carolina Water Service is between $105 and $111 a month, plus a $2.25 convenience fee. I currently spend more on water and sewer than I spend on electricity for my home five to six months of the year. I moved from Charlotte two years ago and compared to the municipal water system down there, I'm paying twice what I was paying in Charlotte. Everyone understands that Carolina Water Service needs to make a reasonable profit, but the rates they charge are already excessively high, and they are a monopoly. It's not like we have any choice or alternative for other, you know, competition to keep their rates reasonable. And all I'm asking is, please protect us consumers by denying this rate increase. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the company?
Questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Little?
No questions, y'all.
All right, any questions from commissioners? All right, hearing done. Mr. Taylor, you may step down and be excused. Thank you very much, sir, for your testimony this afternoon.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, Mr. McCoy, would you unmute the next witness, please, sir?
Hello, this is Rachel Miller.
All right, Ms. Miller, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Little, the witness is yours.
My neighborhood is at our wit's end. We've conversed through multiple thoughts.
Ms. Miller, one minute, please, ma'am. Let's let the public staff's attorney ask you a few questions first.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Miller, tell us your address and then whether or not you're a Carolina Water customer.
I am a customer. I live at 2713 Glastonbury Road, Apex, North Carolina.
What subdivision is that?
Amherst.
And now you can tell the Commission what you'd like?
Thank you. My neighborhood is at our wit's end. We've conversed through multiple facets, and we do not know how to fight the big dog's fight. In the past, our neighbors have attended court to fight the monopoly, Carolina Water Company, and we just seem not to be able to win. We can't afford to pay these bills any longer. My water bill last month was $115. And that might not seem a lot to you, I don't know. I only used 2,200 gallons, they stated, with a base charge of $28.92. Pretty high, it showed up at 47 for just the water. Their wastewater service base charge is $58.91. Let that sink in. More than half a hundred dollars is just a base charge, giving me $68.79 charged for just wastewater. Even if I did not use any water, I turned it off for a month, they would still charge me $87.83 per month for not even using any water. My electricity costs less than that. Carolina Water uses our neighborhood land as well for their tanks. Please tell me how you see how justice is. I hope you, the court, and anyone else who's a part of analyzing if their profit, their cost to us, is worth the stress, the concern, and the utter disbelief is all worth it. If we are in democracy and we can't try to change things, then what is the point of it? I believe we should be able to be heard, and we should be able to speak up on these matters that directly impact our daily lives and how we live. I would hope you see other people's responses and see some damage that this water company is doing to us all. They're monopoly, and I understand that they want to do projects, but price dodging, putting this much stress on their clients is so unnecessary. It's not like we can just go to some other water company because we're just satisfied like it's our internet. You're our only hope at this point. It's only my husband and I in this house, and I cannot imagine what it would be like if I had two children, showering, eating, drinking water. It's already hard times, but raising prices again and again is only making these things harder. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Miller, let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the applicant?
No questions.
All right, any from the public staff?
No questions.
All right, commissioners? All right, Ms. Miller, thank you very much for your testimony this afternoon. You may step down and be excused.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCoy, next witness, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Luz Velez Salem.
All right, Ms. Velez Salem, would you please affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Little, the witness is yours.
Ms. Velez Salem, would you please tell us your address and whether or not you are a customer of Carolina Water Service?
Yes, sir. I live at 13706 Dealtree Lane in Pineville, North Carolina, and we live on the unincorporated side of Pineville. And Carolina Water Service is, I am their customer.
What would you like to tell the Commission today?
Well, I totally oppose this rate increase, and I have several reasons as to why, in my opinion, why they don't deserve an increase at this time. First of all, I'd like to address that it's just my husband and I living in our home, and we have two dogs. Our monthly water bill that just last month was almost $200, and it's just two of us, both of us just taking one shower a day. We spend $150 a month to bring in bottled water, and so the only time we're using this water is either to, you know, flush the toilet, maybe do a dishwasher, and do laundry once a month. And I'm still paying $200 a month in water, not including the $150 that we spend on an average, so that we can have feasible drinking water for ourselves, for our dogs, to cook with, to make ice with, because unfortunately, the water here tastes very nasty, number one. Number two, we've taken tap water and made ice cubes with it. I did an experiment, and then I took the ice cubes and put it in a glass of Coke, and after the ice melted, there was so much thick nasty film on top of my soda that I knew for a fact that this is water that I do not want to drink or cook with. Also, all three of our bathrooms, we live in a two, we have three bathrooms in our home, all three bathrooms smell like straight-up feces. We have hired plumbing companies to come in here and verify, to see how we can get rid of this nasty smell that permeates through our house and our bedrooms. Even though we do put bleach tablets, and I have flame plug-ins, it still smells. Our dogs also will not drink the tap water. And then, even though we did find that we did get a water test per the VA Home Loan, because I am a veteran, even though it passed the water test, we did contact Carolina Water, and we had them send one of their technicians to come and drink this tap water. And the gentleman that came here did agree with us that, yes, the water was not tasting accurately, but that the samples showed that the water test, that the samples were correct in the levels of treatment in the water. And at this time, you know, when I'm looking at a base charge for my water, for example, just without even turning on the faucet, it's expensive. Our wastewater that last, this month even, I mean, last month currently, the base was $58.91, and I only used $34.70. And there's only two of us here. I currently don't agree with the rate increase right now. I think that Carolina Water needs to do a much better service with providing their customers with feasible drinking water.
Ms. Velez Salem, you have exceeded your two minutes, so please wrap up your statement, please, ma'am.
As I said, I just currently, at this time, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and with Carolina Water about to shut off a lot of customers' water off, I don't think at this time they should deserve a rate increase at this time, and so they could provide better water for the customers.
Okay, let me see if there are questions for you from the company?
No questions.
All right, from the public staff?
Yes, a few follow-up questions, Your Honor. Ms. Velez Salem, you said that you had somebody from Carolina Water Service came out to your house and said that everything was fine?
The gentleman did agree with me that the water did not taste appropriate to drink, because he sampled the water inside my home, except that he said that, he showed me that the treatment that they're putting into the water, according to the Charlotte, Carolina, whatever he said, that the levels were accurate in the treatment of the water, so there was not much he could do for us.
Have you made any other further complaints since that visit?
Yes, I have contacted them on a couple of occasions, expressed to Carolina Water that this water, there is a problem here, the bathrooms smell like feces, even though we're not using them, and they have done nothing to even correct the problem. You know, we even hired Morris Jenkins, the plumbing company, to come in here and see if there was something that we can pay out of our own pocket to try to get rid of this smell, and unfortunately, there's nothing that we can do about it. It's just a community well, and this is the effects of the water maybe not being properly treated. We don't know, but we just know that we've hired people, we've paid money, we've alerted Carolina Water, and we still have the same issues. And we also noted to Carolina Water on or about April, somewhere between March or April of 2020, when they came out here and experimented and tasted the water, we expressed to them that we were unable to drink this water, the coffee was nasty, and the only way that we can make good coffee here is by buying bottles of water. And we're spending $150 a month to drink water in our house, on top of $184 of water.
Thank you, Ms. Velez Salem. That's all the questions that I have.
Yes, sir.
All right, let me check in with the commissioners to see if they have questions for Ms. Velez Salem. All right, none from Commissioner McKissick and none from Commissioner Hughes. All right, Ms. Velez Salem, your testimony's been informative today. We appreciate your being here and letting us know your concerns. You may step down and be excused this afternoon. Thank you again, ma'am.
And thank you so much for taking your time to listen to your residence.
Absolutely. All right, Mr. McCoy, call the next witness, please.
Hello?
All right, would you please state your name, please, ma'am?
This is Jessica Felter.
Would you spell your last name, please, ma'am?
Yes, it's F as in Frank, E L T as in Tom, E R.
All right, Ms. Felter, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Little, you may proceed.
Ms. Felter, would you give us your address and whether or not you're a customer of Carolina Water Service, please?
I am a customer of Carolina Water Service. Our address is 304 Watkins, W A, D as in Dog, K I N S, and it's a boulevard here in New Bern, North Carolina.
What subdivision or area in New Bern?
We are labeled in the Oak Creek Estates subdivision under the Carolina Pines subdivision. We are one of the flat-rate sewer customers.
Thank you. And what would you like to tell the Commission today?
I would like to request that they do not be honored with the rate increase. Back in April of 2020, this company was approved to have a significant rate increase at that time of almost $16 extra a month. I currently pay $73.73 just for the sewer, and they are proposing another nearly $11 increase within a year, and I wonder why. I felt the need to call and come forward, because this company is moving towards a monopolistic control, and we have no substitutes readily available to choose from. Our subdivision, the part I'm living in, was built in 2006 to 2007, and had a sewer system built specifically for our new division. At that time, it was under the affiliation of Utilities Incorporated. We are using that system that is only 15 years old, and we are having these increases, and our subdivision has not yet reached max capacity. It is still undeveloped in many of the lots in this subdivision. I also find this proposed rate increase to be, for the flat-rate users, more than those versus on the metered rate. This seems odd, since we, again, would have no way to avoid the increased charges by changing our own use patterns. Therefore, this company just seems to want to take more money, and we don't know what they're using it for. The same impression was given to me when they strongly suggest in multiple emails that we should use their website and app to pay the bills. This last email was sent to me on October 20th. Unless I consent to letting them use autodraft from the bank only on the day my bill is due, I would be charged an extra fee. I currently have my bank send checks a week in advance, and I am not about to switch to their app so that I can be charged for it, to be paid ahead of time. I also wanted to have my voice heard today as a customer that feels that we have no choice and that they're taking advantage of us at times when they don't need it, and they've had a whole year of increased rates to be used towards future maintenance that will be used in this subdivision. That concludes my message.
Jerry, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Let me make sure, Ms. Felter, thank you for your comments this afternoon. Let me make sure there are no questions from counsel, beginning with the applicant. Questions for the witness?
We have no questions. Thank you.
Questions from the public staff?
No questions.
All right, questions from commissioners?
Just a really quick, simple question for Mitchell.
All right, go ahead.
Ms. Felter, you mentioned your sewer bill. Where do you get water from? Is it a well or is it a municipal water supply?
Municipal water supply through Craven County.
Okay, thanks very much. That's all.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Ms. Felter. We appreciate your time with us this afternoon, and you were sharing your concerns with us. You may be excused, may step down and be excused.
Thank you, and I'll have a good day.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. McCoy, please unmute the next witness.
John Gumbel.
All right, Mr. Gumbel, you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Little, you may proceed.
Mr. Gumbel, can you give us your address and whether or not you are a Carolina Water Service customer, and the subdivision or area where you reside?
Yeah, I am a Carolina Water Service customer for the Flat Rate Sewer System. Like the last speaker, I do live in Carolina Pines subdivision of the New Bern area. Like the last speaker, I do live in Carolina Pines subdivision of, of the New Bern area. 107 Forest Landing, 107 Forest Landing, New Bern, North Carolina.
And what would you like to tell the commission today?
I'm a retired Marine Colonel. I live in the Carolina Pines subdivision. I gotta talk real fast because I got a lot to say. I've got a bachelor's degree in economics from UCLA, a master's in systems analysis, and another master's in national resources strategy, which includes things like utilities. So I'm speaking about the, the Carolina Water Service's requested rate increase of 14.8% in their flat-rate sewer service that will take the rate to $84.31 a month. That increase means that those of us with that service will be spending $1,092, $1,092 per year on just sewer service. This requested 14.8% increase is after Carolina Water Services just got a 27.9% increase in April of 2020. Unfortunately, the North Carolina Utility Commission does not look at rate increase requests in the aggregate over a period of time. Instead, they take each rate increase in isolation. If they did look at aggregate rates increases, the Utilities Commission can see that this requested increase will result in a 155% in compounded rate increases since July of 2009. That 155% in the increases is 5.65 times the increase in the Consumer Price Index, which rose a compounded 27.4% from July 2009 through September in this year. Simply put, this requested rate increase will push my sewer cost increases to 565% of the rate inflation since July 2009. There's simply no justification for that. Imagine, if you will, that our courts looked at every criminal case in isolation. Imagine someone going in for a seventh DUI prosecution in the last 12 years, and the court did not look, consider his previous six convictions. That's what the North Carolina Utility Commission is doing when they take each rate increase in isolation. They need to look at the aggregate over a suitable period of time. And every flat rate increase request by Carolina Water Service of the last 12 years has been approved, even when it violated the North Carolina Utilities Commission's own policies concerning the size of increases. The largest increase on a percentage basis was in May 2014, a 40% increase. That increase, after being approved by the commission in spite of significant consumer protest, was found in violation of the policy and rolled back in August 2014. If I got my sewer through the city of New Bern, I would have paid $524 for sewer instead of the $1,000 I will be paying to Carolina Water Service if this rate increase goes through. That is to say, if this rate increase is approved, I will pay nearly, nearly double for sewer what I would have paid if I lived in New Bern City Limits. I get my water from Craven County, as the last speaker mentioned. I've had one very marginal increase for water in the 16, last 16 years, and that was in 2011. Craven County kept their base rate the same as it was in 2011 at $15 per month, which is the total amount that many residences pay. In 2009, I paid $332 for water and $442 for sewer. Last year, I paid only $260 for water and $881 for sewer. As my water usage has gone down, my sewer bills increased dramatically. Carolina Water Service also requests to change the process of electronic payments to Carolina Water Service's third-party payment vendor. They propose eliminating electronic payment fees that countries pay directly to the third-party vendor. Instead, they want to roll them into the base rate. I've got the automatic debit that, that Carolina Water Service wants to use, so I don't pay that additional fee. If they roll those additional fees into the base rate, that means I get to pay a proportion of those as well, which I'm really not interested in.
You've reached the end of your two minutes. I've, I've given you some leniency here, sir, but please wrap it up.
Okay, bottom line, Carolina Water Service is being incentivized for behavior that's negative for us consumers. We need the North Carolina Utilities Commission to properly incentivize them for saving consumer money instead of incentivizing them to add more and more to their base rates. We need that North Carolina Utilities Commission to develop a rate structure and incentives that are beneficial for North Carolina consumers and the suppliers, not just the suppliers. But until they can do that, until they can develop a rate structure, they need to deny this rate increase requested by Carolina Water Service. Thanks for listening. I got more, I got plenty more, but I'll stop here.
All right, all right, Mr. Gumbel, you, you said a whole lot in those brief minutes, so thank you for sharing your concerns. Let me check to see with council to see if there are questions for you, beginning with the applicant.
We have no questions, thank you.
All right, public staff?
No questions.
All right, commissioners? All right, Mr. Gumbel, my, my colleagues don't have questions for you, but I do have one. Just tell me about the quality of the service that, of the, of the wastewater service that Carolina Water provides you. Has that been satisfactory? Has it been adequate?
Yeah, Chair Mitchell, there's no complaint about the sewage system. I mean, it's an un-metered system. The plant is, you know, I walk my dog past the plant here in Carolina Pines, and really there's been no changes to that plant in the last 16 years. I'm at a loss for where all this money goes, but, but really, this whole thing is about cost, and it's about cost in comparison to the Consumer Price Index. 565% of the consumer price increases over, since July 2009, and, and it's just unconscionable. And I checked with the public staff, and the public staff did make me aware that, that rate increases are not considered in the aggregate. They're only done in isolation for the current rate increase. Nobody does business like that, nobody. That's how you end up with compounded rate increases that are, that are over five times the rate of inflation.
All right, Mr. Gumbel, thank you for your response. All right, with that, sir, you, you may step down and be excused this afternoon. Thank you very much for your testimony today.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCoy, please unmute the next witness.
Hello?
All right, would you please state your name for the record?
Kimberly Dunwoodie.
All right, Ms. Dunwoodie, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Little, you may proceed with the witness.
Ms. Dunwoodie, give us your address and are you, whether or not you're a Carolina Water customer and the area or subdivision where you reside?
Yes, our, our address is 410 Hillcrest Drive, Morehead City. Our subdivision is Brandywine Bay, and yes, I am a Carolina Water Service customer.
Well, what would you like to, for the commission to hear from you today?
Well, I, I would like to say that we strongly oppose the rate increase that Carolina Water is applying for. Our average bill for water and sewer is $154 a month, and that's just for two of us. The color of our water is yellow, and I'm, I'm serious, it is yellow. It stains our sinks, our tubs, our toilets, our white towels. We are told by our other neighbors in Brandywine Bay that they have been told through Carolina Water that it's the tannins in the, in the water that gives the yellow color. We obviously don't drink this water. It's, it's horrible looking, it makes our ice yellow, so we buy our ice, we buy our drinking water. We just feel that the rate increase is uncalled for.
All right, Ms. Dunwoodie, thank you for your testimony today. Let me check in with council to see if there are questions for you, beginning with the applicant.
No questions, thank you.
All right, public staff?
Yes, Ms. Dunwoodie, you said you've been told about, it's the tannins that have, has that been from Carolina, from somebody coming to your residence?
No, we've been told to multiple neighbors in the Brandywine Bay subdivision that that is what they have been told through Carolina Water from people actually coming, coming in. We're fairly new to the neighborhood, so this is really new to all of us, so.
Have you talked, have you called and made a complaint to Carolina Water about the quality of your water?
I have not. Like I said, we're, we're relatively new to the neighborhood, so I have not done this yet, but getting this notice in the mail has prompted me to want to be a witness today.
That's all I have.
All right, question, thank you, Mr. Little. Questions from commissioners? Ms. Dunwoodie, I do have, my colleagues don't have questions for you, but I do have one or two. You've stated that you and your husband are, are fairly new to the Brandywine Bay subdivision. Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
Where did you all, were you all Carolina Water customers prior to moving into Brandywine Bay?
No, we moved here from Indiana.
From Indiana, okay. And can you tell me how the cost of your water and sewer service compares to that which you paid when you lived in Indiana?
Oh, it's almost double what we paid in Indiana.
Were you a municipal customer in Indiana, or were you the customer of a water utility?
We're a water, a water utility.
Okay. All right, Ms. Dunwoodie, I have nothing further for you. Thank you for your time this afternoon and your testimony regarding your concerns about the rate increase. You may.
Okay.
Step down and be excused.
Thank you very much for hearing me.
All right, Mr. McCoy, unmute the next witness, please.
Hello, hi, this is Alex Yandukin.
All right, would you please spell your name for the record, sir?
Alex Yandukin, Y-A-N as in Nancy, D-U-K-I-N as in Nancy.
All right, Mr. Yandukin, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Little, you may proceed.
Mr. Yandukin, excuse me, please give us your address and tell us whether or not you're a Carolina Water Service customer and the subdivision or area that you live in.
It is 5413 Swordsman Court, Nightdale. I am a user of Carolina Water Service, and I reside in Covington Cross.
What would you like to tell the commission today?
The, the company does not deserve a pay increase and a rate increase, and I think they should be blocked from asking for at least several years. That's too frequent.
All right, Mr. Yandukin, is that the extent of your testimony today?
Oh, no, no, okay, I'm sorry. So basically, for me, what happened here is I bought a house in Nightdale. I moved here from Raleigh. I bought a house in Nightdale just November last year. So when I moved in, I started setting up my utilities and everything. I called up the water company, they told me to call up. So I spent 45 minutes on hold for them while they created my account. I don't know what happened there, but for 45 minutes I was put on hold, just waiting for my account to be created. So I just looked up on Google and saying, it's like, what's wrong with the company? Is it common for them to just have such a crappy service? So I only see one-star review for them, and all of them really complained about how, that all the complaints were about the quality of service was really bad, the infrastructure was bad, the, the price of, the cost of service is bad, the quality of water is also, most of the reviews were about that, specifically about the cost. Everybody was simply concerned about the cost. So of course, it's kind of hard to believe, but I have some small technical issues. Okay, and so I was comparing the two bills side by side because I just moved from Raleigh, just 16 miles away, and it was serviced by C D O Raleigh, and comparing the two bills, they were simply, I'm sorry, my computer just froze up. So the two bills were comparison side by side, it was just phenomenal, it was just the, the base charge for water and sewer, $90 a month. Okay, here, so my previous address, before I moved over to C D O Raleigh, the base water cost was $26 for base charge. For the Carolina Water Service, the base charge is $28.92. For the waste, the C D O Raleigh, just before that, I paid base charge of $7.61, and the base charge for Carolina Water, Water Service is $58.91. And additionally, the water charge for C D O Raleigh was $1.15 per 1,000 gallons, whereas in Carolina Water Service, it's $8.27 per 1,000 gallons. But the, the change is completely very different. And I couldn't get any explanations. Anywhere I called, any technician to talk to, the people who check my meter services, they didn't have explained what the charges are for, no explanation. And there's no explanation why the rate increase right now, why they deserve the pay increase, what's happening. And the result, I pay more for water than I pay for either electricity. My property taxes are way cheaper than my water bill. My internet and two phone, cell phones cost is cheaper than my water bill. My car insurance is cheaper for two cars, is cheaper than my water bill. And there's just no explanation for why the charges are high, why the service is bad, why, and why the rate is increasing right now. And I actually, before that, I lived in Phoenix, Arizona.
Mr. Yandukin, you've come to the end of your two minutes, so please wrap up your testimony.
Okay, so I don't understand the, the reason why the water is so high for Carolina Water Service, and I don't understand explanation why the rate keeps increasing. There's no explanation for this rate increase, and I, I really just urge people just also look at, besides listening to our testimonials, just look up on Google reviews, Better Business Bureau, et cetera, of other users complaining about the same issue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yandukin. Let me see if there are questions for you from council, beginning with applicant.
Thank you, one quick question. Mr. Yandukin, are you in the city limits of Nightdale?
No, that would be right. I'm not sure about the city, I mean, the city limits, but I'm right in the town of Nightdale.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, questions from the public staff?
No questions.
All right, questions from commissioners?
Just a quick, quick question, Chair Mitchell. You, you talked about the, the base charge. Could you say a little bit about your total, your total bill and whether it varies from month to month, or is it fairly, fairly flat across the year? I guess you've lived there about a year, I think so.
Yeah, so my, my average bill is from $110 to $120 a month. Last, in October, it was $118.84. Whereas in C D O Raleigh, my average bill was about $45 a month.
Okay, do, do you know what your highest bill has been since you moved there?
No, about $120. My water usage about the same.
Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Yandukin, there are no further questions for you, so you may step down and be excused. Thank you very much for your testimony this afternoon, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCoy, please unmute the next witness.
Hello, this is James Whited.
All right, Mr.
Hello, this is James.
Mr. Whited, we, we hear you loud and clear, sir. Would you, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Whited. Mr. Little, the witness is yours.
Mr. Whited, would you give us your address, whether or not you're a Carolina Water or Sewer customer and the subdivision or area where you reside, please?
Sure, yes, I am a Carolina Water Service customer. My address is 6055 Haversham, H-A-D-E-R-S-H-A-M Drive. That is in Kernersville, North Carolina, and it is in the Abington subdivision.
And what would you like to tell the commission today, sir?
And, and I forgot to mention, I am also a customer of water and sewer of Carolina Water. First of all, I, I want to say that I am opposed to this request to increase rates. I've spoken with a number of other residents in our neighborhood that is not able to attend. Over the last two years, we've lived in this neighborhood for five years, and we came from a, from a town called Randleman, North Carolina. It's roughly 30 miles away. We paid, our usage, we're a family of four, I have two small kids, and my daughter is six, so at the time, she was one, one and a half when we moved. When we, when we lived in Randleman, I went and got my last water bill from there when, when we were there. We were charged every two months. Our usage was roughly 10,000 gallons over two months. We paid almost $60 for water and $60 for sewer. So that was a roughly $120 to $130 every two months for both water and sewer out of town very close to here. We were very surprised to see the increase in water and sewer when we moved into the neighborhood. I have not felt compelled to call in and testify to the. I have not felt compelled to call in and testify to the various and numerous requests for rate increases by Carolina Water. Um, we don't have any other options for water and sewer in our neighborhood. Um, I've been told that we can pay the city to, uh, to run pipes and lines through our houses, but that would get into thousands upon thousands of dollars. And I think Carolina Water knows this. Um, Carolina Water is a, I believe, a subsidiary of Utilities, Inc. And I think a lot of the, uh, the money that they are taking is also going back to the parent company. They have a monopoly on our area, and they are taking advantage of the residents of, of this area. They're taking advantage of their customers. In February of two thousand twenty, our water was roughly fifty-five dollars, and our waste, our sewer was roughly sixty dollars. That's both base and usage. Um, we, we, we are very usage conscious. We bought a rain barrel to water our garden. Um, we, uh, we, we shower roughly every other day, sometimes every day i- if, if it's, uh, if, if the kids are dirty or something.
Mr. Whitehead. Mr. Whitehead, you've reached
Yes, ma'am.
your two minutes, so please wrap up your testimony.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, this company has asked, has increased their rates, um, in March. I think you've heard roughly by, uh, thirteen dollars on base. Um, they increased it again in December. Um, they, it looks like they increased it also in, uh, April. They're asking to increase it again. Um, this, the increase, if annualized, has resulted in roughly nine and a half percent increase year over year. That's more than any other utility company, um, or electric company, um, combined. And I would ask that the, the commission review Utilities, uh, Incorporated's request, along with other municipalities in the area, to verify their, their costs before approving any further increases. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate you listening to our testimonies.
All right, thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, starting with the applicant.
No questions, thank you.
All right, questions, uh, from the public staff?
Questions.
Questions from commissioners?
Uh, Chair Mitchell, I have one or two questions.
All right, Commissioner McKissick.
Mr. Whitehead, I just want to make sure I understand your testimony. I think you indicated that you've lived in this subdivision in Kernersville for about five years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is it your testimony that it's increased, your, your charges, water and sewer, have increased about nine and a half percent per year, each year since you've resided there?
Yes, a lot of this data is based off of another neighbor in my, in my area. Um, they annualize these, this increase since two thousand thirteen. Um, sorry I didn't state that. Um, but yes, another resident named Dave Webke, um, produced a spreadsheet going from two thousand thirteen until now. Um, showing the, the rate increases using about a five thousand gallon usage, um, that, um, and then annualized is about a nine and a half percent annualized rate of increase.
I see. So this was not your, uh, an increase you personally observed. It was based upon the computations of a neighbor who had extrapolated what it had been since two thousand thirteen. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our, our increase, uh, we have been experiencing multiple increases. Um, most notably, March of last year, right after the pandemic started, which was a base increase of about, uh, thirteen dollars on wastewater and roughly, uh, four to five dollars on water. Uh, the increases continue to go up. Um, I have not, uh, personally calculated the actual rate, uh, of our increase. Um, but, uh, it has been increasing, and, um, this one is, like I said, nine and a half percent that he has experienced and shared with me.
I see. And, and I think you said when you were in Randleman, you would, you would consume about ten thousand gallons, and that was every two months? Is that right?
That's correct. I, I'll say that the, uh, the bill that I'm currently looking at, the date from, was April, uh, fifth, two thousand sixteen, to May twenty-eighth of two thousand sixteen. And, um, the usage on that is ten thousand one hundred gallons.
Okay, and, uh, just two more questions. What, what
Sure.
gallons per month do you think you're consuming right now?
Um, on our last bill, uh, it shows four thousand four hundred gallons. Um, and I would say that's, that's pretty much around the average for us. Our last bill, um, that I'm looking at, combined was a hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, it has gone up, uh, upwards around one fifty-five. It has been down around one thirty-five, and that's after this last rate increase.
And I guess the final
We do generally
Sure.
We generally say around forty-four hundred. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And before you bought the home in the subdivision that you were in or rented that home, uh, did you realize that Carolina Water Service was your provider or would be your provider?
Um, it was disclosed to us that Caroli-, well, at the time, I can't remember if it was advertised as Utilities, Inc., or if it was Carolina Water, because I've, I originally known them as Utilities, Inc., and I, I don't recall where that came from. But I do know that it was disclosed to us that that was the provider. Um, we, we didn't think to ask for a, uh, a, a history of usage on water. Again, we were thinking, you know, coming from, from Randleman, where our bill was roughly a hundred and thirty-five dollars every two months. Uh, prior to that, I lived in Thomasville, North Carolina, in a county, and, um, and the water was, I want to say it was like twenty-five dollars a month. Um, and it had a, uh, it had a, uh, septic system. Um, uh, I had no idea that the water would be as expensive as it is here. The water here is extremely hard. Um, I know Carolina Water can't help that, but we've also bought a, uh, a water softening system, a, a whole-home water softening system, and a filter for our home. Um, we, we just noticed some, some, I, I guess, truck, just, uh, just digestive things, and we, uh, we were worried about the water. A lot of neighbors told us that the water was extremely hard. Some suggested a whole-home water softening system, and so we went ahead and invested in that. It has helped, but, uh, that also, it adds to our cost because we've got to buy salt pellets, uh, every, every three to four months.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Uh, Chair Mitchell, I don't have any further questions.
All right, Mr. Whitehead, thank you very much for your testimony today. You may step down and be excused.
Thank you all very much. You have a good day.
All right, uh, Mr. McCoy, you may unmute the next witness.
Hello.
Uh, good afternoon. Would you please state your record, uh, your name for the record?
Are you talking to me?
I am talking to you, sir. Would you please identify
Absolutely. This is Ron Mello, M-E-L-L-O-W.
All right, Mr. Mello, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, you may, let's see, Mr. Little, you may proceed with your witness.
Mr. Mello, would you give us your, um, address, please?
Certainly. This is eleven sixty-two Treys Island Road in Sapphire, North Carolina.
Excuse me, and are you a, uh, customer of Carolina Water Service?
Yes, we have been since they bought our local water system in about two thousand and, uh, seven or eight. We built our home here in, in nineteen ninety-nine, and we're, uh, summer residence only.
What, what is the name of your subdivision or the area you live in?
We live in Fairfield Sapphire Valley in Holly Forest, uh, fourteen.
And what would you like to tell the commission today, sir?
Well, I've been hearing so, so many other people that have mentioned similar problems, but in two thousand eleven, uh, CWS was granted a thirty-nine point eight percent increase, and in two thousand and thirteen, they got twenty-two point six percent water, sixty-two point five percent sewer increase. Right now, our monthly rate is a hundred and two dollars. That's base. We're only here six months of the year, so for six months, we pay a hundred and two dollars for zero water usage. And when we use water, the bill is around a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty dollars a month. Uh, we also pay for water availability on our vacant lot. One of the problems we see, though, our system here is old, and it's in need of maintenance. And CWS just patches. Uh, we had eleven boil-water notices in the recent past. Now, one reason we're getting a lot of those is they're putting in a fiber optic system, and they're digging near the water pipes. Uh, and they've broken several pipes. I happened to walk by and talk to the water line repairman down in the hole. And he told me that the pipe was not directly hit, but even a close call will crack old pipes. Now, when CWS has a leak, they have to shut the water off in our entire neighborhood because the isolating valves are inoperable. It seems the road paving crew paved over the valves a few years ago. I would think that CWS should repair that or get it repaired by now so they could use their valves. We do pay a monthly improvement charge, but we don't see any improvements. I think our water bill is too high, of course, like everybody else. But they should not be increased until the upgrade improvements that we're paying for, our plan approved and started. Uh, I might mention, too, that, uh, we're residents of Central Florida. Our legal address is Florida. And we've saw, we've seen never, many newspaper articles that Utilities Incorporated purchased some private water systems in Central Florida. And all has reported these same problems in our local newspaper. So I think it's systemic thing. That United Water buys these little utility companies and goes for price increase, price increase, price increase because they must have developed a good program to gain these increases from the Public Service Commission that we call it in Florida. Here, the Utilities Commission. I don't think they are, uh,
All right.
entitled to any more increases. Thank you.
Mr. Mello, you have reached the end of your two minutes. Uh, let me see if there are questions for you, um, from counsel for the company.
Thank you.
All right, questions from the public staff?
Questions.
All right, any questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I have a, a couple, uh, Chair Mitchell.
Okay.
Could you just, you had mentioned when there's a, a leak, um, they shut a valve down that has, impacts, uh, you, your neighborhood. How, how many houses are roughly in that? In that
How many houses?
area? Yeah.
Uh, well, our neighborhood, which is Holly Forest fourteen, called Eagle Ridge, uh, we have sixty-five houses.
Okay. Um, a- and are those sixty-five houses, uh, do you have a rough estimate of how many people that live there year-round versus, um, just
Sure. We have about four year-round residents. And it, glad you brought that up. Interesting, because it seemed like in the past, every time there was an announced rate increase, the, uh, meetings were always held when there was nobody here. So we never got to attend. Uh, I did write, our Attorney General in two thousand eleven asked him to be my advocate. I got a letter back from the assistant where she had passed my letter on to the commissioners. Uh, but we're, we're strictly a, uh, uh, summer home place here, I guess.
Okay, well, thank you for that. No, no further questions.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mello, uh, there are no further questions for you, so you may step down and be excused. Thank you very much for your testimony before us today, sir.
Thanks for having me on. I appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, Mr. McCoy, please unmute the next witness.
Uh, hello, it's Randy Bentley here.
All right, Mr. Bentley, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Little, you may proceed with your witness.
Mr. Bentley, would you tell us your address, um, whether or not you're a Carolina Water, uh, Service, Water Customer, Sewer Customer, and, um, the name of your subdivision, please?
Um, my title is the Director of Property Services, uh, at the Hounders Club, which is in Boone, North Carolina. The address is three twenty-eight Shoals Mill Road in Boone. And, um, basically, I'm just trying to speak for some of the representatives that are some of the, um, residents that live in Hounders Club. I, I, me personally, I'm not a Carolina Water, I, I am personally a Carolina Water customer from my own home, but not in Hounders where I'm speaking, uh, about.
So you're speaking on behalf of the Hounders subdivision?
Uh, ju- yeah, so I'm speaking on the administrative part of the Hounders Club, because we've got, you know, clubhouses and, and other facilities that Hounders owns. Um, but also, um, speaking for some of the homeowners that can't attend the meeting.
What would you like to tell the commission today?
Uh, basically, that, uh, a lot of the homeowners in here are on fixed incomes, and, um, you know, they, they just want to make sure that, uh, basically, if there is a pricing increase, that, um, you know, it's warranted, and, and basically, that, um, uh, it's, it's not, um, uh, uh, you know, an obscene amount. Um, the cost of living is, you know, I think they, they generated that for next year, uh, at five point nine percent. And they're saying that that's the, the biggest annual hike in forty years, um, uh, for overall, um, cost of living rate increase. So, um, I, I think that their, their increase rate over here is around eleven percent, which is, you know, even higher than the, the price of, of living increase. So, um, basically, just want to make sure that, uh, you know, if they're warranted, uh, any kind of a price increase, that it's, you know, justified in, in a reasonable amount. That's it.
All right, Mr. Bentley, thank you for your testimony. Let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the applicant.
No questions from Mr. Bentley, thank you.
All right, any from the public staff?
No questions.
Questions from commissioners? All right, Mr. Bentley, there are no questions for you this afternoon, so you may step down and be excused. Thank you very much, sir, for your testimony today.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCoy, call the, uh, would you unmute the next witness, please?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. Would you state your name for the record?
My name is Trip Stallings.
All right, Mr. Stallings, do you affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Little, you may proceed.
Mr. Stallings, give us your address. Tell us whether or not you're a, uh, Carolina Water Service Sewer and/or Water Customer?
Yes, I live at one zero eight eight Powderhorn Mountain Road in Deep Gap, and I am a customer of CWS.
And what would you like to tell the commission today?
I'm here to speak against the proposed rate increase, like everybody else's point, but with what I hope is a constructive option. Um, my small mountain community near Boone is similar to many of those served by Carolina Water. Uh, much of my community's water system, though, is little more than PVC pipe, running a thin spider web network about one to two feet underground, and often with no major protection. Uh, some segments are old, and they were installed when the community was first established in the eighties. I don't know whether Carolina Water installed it or just inherited it at some time between then and now, but it is now Carolina Water's responsibility. Uh, the, the original pipe is very The original pipe is very brittle. It breaks easily in your hand if you flex it, not surprisingly like some of the other callers. Carolina Water is in our community often, sometimes several times a week, repairing leaks as they're discovered. Usually, these repairs include upgrading a link to the brittle pipe. But even with frequent visits and regular replacements, much of the original system remains, with Carolina Water typically opting for minimal replacement whenever a leak is discovered, rather than proactively planning for a uniform upgrade to our entire water system. And leak discovery, unfortunately, is sometimes a little more than guesswork. Our best hope is actually when we have a leak that is large enough for water to appear on the surface. When no surface water is visible, we have to rely on Carolina Water personnel being willing to use listening devices to search for an underground leak. Detection is an art. It's not a science. I've been out there with them. We're on a first-name basis. Last week, a Carolina Water crew member examined the line outside my house with such a device and reported that, though he could hear several, what he called whispers, he was unsure whether Carolina Water would approve line replacement without more evidence. Pressure to my house fell to about 30 PSI, which I understand is the bare minimum, at the street connection several months ago. Some days, it's even lower than that, and it remains there today even with recent pipe replacements farther up the line. Neighbors down the line from me inexplicably have higher pressure than I do. And at this point, I've invested about $1,000 in getting plumbers to verify that the pressure problem is not related to anything located on my property. But to be honest with you, I'm not here to complain about water pressure or even what I pay per month. I pay a lot less than most of the other callers. Anybody who lives in a mountain community like mine knows that water systems are likely always going to be a little laissez-faire relative to what we could have in an incorporated town. Instead, I'm here to encourage, urge this commission to deny Carolina Water's request for rate increase unless Carolina Water is willing to sign a legally binding commitment to begin uniformly upgrading outdated water systems in neighborhoods like mine as soon as possible. This commission, as some callers have noted, is the only lever remaining for consumers like me and my neighbors. We're not able to apply pressure for change on our own by taking our business elsewhere. We have nowhere else to turn. Thank you for your time for hearing my testimony today.
All right. Mr. Stallings, thank you for your testimony. Let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with applicant.
There are questions. Thank you, Mr. Stallings.
All right. Any questions from the public staff?
Questions.
All right. Questions from commissioners?
Just a quick one. What do you have for sewer service, wastewater service, Mr. Stallings? Is it septic system or municipal system? Or is it Carolina?
I'm on, I'm on, I'm on septic.
Okay. Thanks.
Which is probably why my costs per month are so much less than these other callers. I've never experienced that septic charge they're talking about.
Mr. Stallings, I do have a question for you as well. Commissioner Hughes, just give me a signal that you were, that you have no further questions for the witness.
No further questions.
Okay. Mr. Stallings, have you, have you discussed the pressure issue with the company?
Oh, I've been working on this with them for about six months now. The most recent passage of time, I started again with them in late August and have been going through up to about a week or two ago. I typically get a notice afterwards that they tried to contact me, which usually isn't the case. But when the guys do come out, and they're in our neighborhood all the time, I can either just talk to them directly or flag them down as they're driving by. But it's, it's been a weekly event for me for the last couple of months.
And so, since you have been engaging with the company over the past six months, have there, have there been any improvements in the pressure? Has there been any action taken by the company to address your concern?
Yeah. I mean, I want to give them props for that. So they replaced about 200 or 300 feet of line up about a quarter of a mile from my house. But the problem is, like I said, that the pipe is so brittle, and as you may recall, we've had minor earthquake trimmers and things like that up in the mountains over the last year or two. There are too many breaks for, for patchwork to really do the job, and that's the issue. You can't go in and find one leak and fix it, which they do. It's hard enough to find a leak sometimes, and even when they do, there's just so much more piping that needs to be replaced so that it's not this brittle stuff that breaks every time you breathe on it. But yeah, they, they come out, there's guys there all the time working on stuff, and that's actually one of the problems.
Okay. All right.
They've never, they've never, though, isolated, you know, my problem. They can't seem to solve that, and I can't either. I'm $1,000 in on, on, on other plumbers trying to solve it. So, you know, there's still more to do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stallings. Appreciate your testimony today.
Madam Chair, could I ask him one quick question and follow up?
All right. Commissioner McKissick, you may.
Yeah. You've mentioned that you've been dealing with Carolina Water Service over the last six months about issues. Have you raised with them the question that you've raised with us today about any system-wide improvements? And if so, what were you told?
I haven't asked them that, but part of the reason is because I can't talk to them, Mr. McKissick. When you call them, you get a call center in Illinois or Florida. I'm on a first-name basis with those folks. Shout out to Kelly in Florida, who's been a delight. I've asked many times to get a call back from our local representative, who I know by name, but I'm not going to name in testimony. That would just be cruel, but I've never received that. I finally got one phone call back at the end of the last two-month spate from a guy who doesn't service my area, but services the one next to it, and was just covering up on some of the calls that had been, that had been backlog. I have yet to have a chance to talk to anybody, other than the guys who come to the neighborhood who I can flag down, and they only know as much as they know on their end, which is on the maintenance side. I would love the opportunity to talk, but have never really had a chance to connect, even though I've called frequently.
Okay. And what would you say your average water sewer bill is?
Oh, it's way low compared to these guys, but part that's because there's no water in my house. I don't take a shower every day because I can't. I probably pay 30 or 40 a month. I've, I have no problem with the current cost. This is more about whether or not we're going to see anything as a result of this increase to fix this decrepit 40-year-old system.
And you're a year-round resident in Deep Gap. Is that right?
I'm part-year, but I will be full-year transitioning in January, and they're about six months of the year now. I go back and forth between Deep Gap and Raleigh.
I see. Thank you, sir. I don't have any further questions.
Thanks.
All right. Mr. Stallings, thank you very much for your testimony today. You may step down, sir, and be excused.
All right. Thanks very much.
All right. All right. Mr. McCoy, unmute the next witness, please, sir. All right. Would you state your name for the record, please, ma'am?
Capri McDonald.
All right. Ms. McDonald, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Would you please proceed? Mr. Little, would you please, please proceed with the witness?
Ms. McDonald, tell us your address and whether or not you're a Carolina Water customer?
My address is 5204 My Lady Court, M-Y-L-A-D-Y, located in Knightdale, North Carolina. I am a Carolina Water Services customer, and my community is actually Bishop Point.
Are you a water and sewer customer or just water?
Water and sewer.
What would you like to tell the commission today?
I come before you today to testify against the proposed rate increase from Carolina Services. Since my homeownership at my property, I have seen the rates increase with Carolina Services throughout the years. I brought my home 10 years ago, in 2011. I have documentation going back to July 2013, where my rate was $66.62 a month. It's now currently $156.97 a month. My household consists of solely myself and my four-year-old son. With only my son and I residing at the home, my water and sewer bills are continuously higher than my electric bills, my gas bills, and even my car insurance. My current average monthly water and sewer bill, I didn't average over the past 13 months, it averages out to be about $145 a month. If I do it penny dollar for dollar, I paid $1,800 in water and sewer for the year of, from October 2020 to October 2021. It is truthful to say that I currently pay more for my water than heating, cooling, and other electrical needs of my 1,958 square foot home. According to recent data that I found from Eskins, the average of about 500 water and wastewater utilities that serve more than 800 million people in North Carolina, on average, the pay is about $27 to $41 per month for 5,000 gallons of water and wastewater. In October of this year, 2021, during a 30-day cycle, I used a comparable 5,000 gallons of water and had a bill of $156.97. Due to the incredible cost of water and sewer, I have contacted a plumber to ensure there were no water leaks. I have updated all of my appliance, the energy-efficient appliances, including my washer. The water heater has been replaced, dishwasher, refrigerator, all of my appliances are new. I have replaced faucets to efficient flow faucets in the kitchen and as well in all the bathrooms, and still, to no prevail, I'm still having hot water bills. In addition to implementing these things in my home, I have also contacted the Utility Commission to inquire on the rates and file complaints. I have also, on numerous occasions, contacted Carolina Water, Water, Carolina Water Services, and requested that they come out to reread my meter to ensure that it was accurate. Again, as some of the callers have already stated, it has been difficult to get follow-up and follow-through with Carolina Water Services when contacting them. Carolina Water Services is currently the only water and sewer utility company serving the Bishop Point, Amber Acres, Covington Cross communities. We are a community that kind of runs into one, but is three different separate communities. Without broader selection of water and sewer utility companies, the residents must pay the rates that are imposed by Carolina Water Services. I ask that you consider the fair and comparable rates in North Carolina and limit, limit the, limit or more or less deny a rate increase by Carolina Water Services. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Let's see if there are questions for you, beginning with the counsel for the applicant.
Questions. Thank you.
All right. Public staff?
Just a few questions. Your.
All right, Mr. Little.
McDonald, you said you had contacted the Utilities Commission.
Yes.
Did you follow, was that the Consumer Support Division?
It was the North Carolina Utility Commission located in Raleigh, North Carolina. I was assigned a investigator or whomever it was who reached back out to me and got more information about the complaint, but nothing was formally done, other than a request for them to come out and reread the reader, the meter.
Is that the only time you've contacted the Utilities Commission?
I've been here for 10 years, and I've contacted the Utility Commission on numerous occasions. I really can't even tell you how many times. And I've also been, during those contacts, the last investigator, she also told me to participate in the public hearings. That would be my time to voice about any concerns I had regarding the rate.
And what, what is your complaint about, that you've been making to the commission? Is it about your billing or your service, service issues? Can you give us, why were you calling the commission?
It was about the billing each month. Well, a little bit of both, honestly. It was about the billing. I would reach out to Carolina Water Services and would never get anyone to call me back or be able to get any solid answers. And then also just wanted to know why each month my rate was continually, continuously growing up. When I first moved into my home, I was working for a head start program and traveled across the state, and would literally be home one week out of the month and was still having outrageous water and sewer bills. And so I contacted Carolina Water Services, couldn't get any follow-up. That prompted me to contact Utility Commission. Again, this year, about March, it seems like the rates jumped. I contacted the Utility Commission. So I've contacted them again throughout my 10 years of residing in the home on numerous different occasions.
And for, and you're not satisfied with your bill, still, I take it?
Nothing has been done, no, sir. I've even contacted the town of Knightdale, trying to find other avenues as far as if there was other water companies in which I could switch for my utilities. I've been explained, it has been explained to me that we are outside of the town of Knightdale. If we wanted to be a part of the town of Knightdale Water, we would have to pay for the additional piping to be laid, which, again, would be thousands of dollars. But yes, I'm not satisfied.
We're talking about the rate increase, and I'm trying to understand what your billing issues are. Is it leaks in your home? Is it inaccurate meters? Or is it just?
That's the thing. I don't have any leaks. I pay for plumbers to come out. I don't have any leaks. It's just myself and my four-year-old son, and I pay $156.97 a month for water and sewer. My, currently, this is before the proposed, any additional proposed pipe that you are suggesting now. So my issue is what I pay on a monthly basis for just me and a four-year-old in a home.
All right. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
All right. Questions from the other commissioners?
Madam Chair, just one quick question.
All right. Commissioner McKissick.
And that's this, Ms. McDonald, I think you said when you originally moved in, your bill was about $66.62 or somewhere thereabouts. Do you know what your gallons of consumption were at that time?
It was still the base of 5,000, well, actually, 4,400.
4,400, okay. And, and now you're saying with you and your four-year-old, it's about 5,000 a month? Is that right?
Yes.
A gallons of consumption?
That's correct.
And it's gone?
My current bill says 5,000.
5,000, okay. And it's gone from $66 up to $156. Is that right?
That's correct.
And you've had everything checked out in your home, and you have all new appliances, so you don't attribute it to anything other than, I guess, a modest increase in consumption since you first began living there?
That's correct.
Okay. I guess want to make sure I had it straight. Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald. I have no further questions. Chair, Michael.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. McDonald, thank you very much for your testimony this afternoon. We appreciate hearing from you and appreciate the time that you've taken to be here. There's nothing for you, so you may step down this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. McCoy, I want you to go ahead and unmute the next witness, please, sir. Do we have a witness on the line?
Hello?
All right. Would you please state your name for the record, please, sir?
It's William David Bass.
All right. Mr. Bass, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Mr. Little?
Mr. Bass, would you give us your address and tell us whether you're a Carolina Water customer with the, the water and sewer service or just water?
I am Carolina Water and it's sewer and, and water, and it's 4900 Matlock, M-A-T-L-O-C-K Court, Apex, North Carolina. I'm in the Amherst subdivision.
And what would you like to tell the commission today, sir?
I mean, I've been in this house for 28 years. My water bill was $19. Not to forget who, who had it first. I know Utilities Aint had it at one point, then Carolina Water got hold of it. And from that point on, it's been increase after increase, and I've been through several. I went to court with testimonies, and the courts never deny their increases. I just don't know what makes them think they deserve an increase. I mean, they're not doing anything special. I had to put, I've got a rain soft water system in my house. And, you know, my water's fine. I can't complain about the quality, but I think it's got a lot to do with the water system, too. But they never read my meter. They, 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 they use a guess, guesstimate. I even got there and put a piece of tape on the meter, just to see if it's been lifted up, and they would never see that. It's not lifted up, so they, they don't, they never read it. They just charge you what they want to. But this increase is just unbelievable. I pay 100, about $145 a month for myself, and that's just, people are moving out of this neighborhood because of the cost of water. And I'll never move into another place to have Utilities Aint, Carolina Water, none of the rest of them, because they're unfair, they're illegal, robbery. That's all I got to say.
All right. Mr. Bass, let me see if there are questions for you from counsel for the applicant.
No questions. I'm sorry. No questions. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Public staff?
No questions.
Commissioners? All right. Mr. Bass, thank you very much for your testimony today. We appreciate your time and your being with us here this afternoon. You may step down and be excused, sir.
Okay. I appreciate y'all's time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. McCoy, let's, let's, folks, we're going to take one more witness before we take a 10-minute break. So, Mr. McCoy, please unmute the next witness. Do we have a witness on the line?
Yes, hello?
All right. Would you please state your name for the, for the record, please, sir?
Yes, it's Michael Caramanian. That's K-A-
All right, Mr. Karamanian, would you, uh, do you affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, uh, Mr. Little, the witness is yours.
Mr. Karamanian, would you give us your address and tell us if you're a Carolina Water Service customer?
Yes, it's 913 C Holly Court, New Bern, North Carolina, in Fairfield Harbor.
And what would you like to tell the commission today, sir?
Yes, uh, I would like to strongly oppose the rate increase. And in fact, I think the rate should be rolled back. Just as a point of reference, I purchased, uh, my home in October of 2018. Full disclosure, I am not a pri, it's not my primary residence. So I have months of, uh, zero usage when I'm not there. And when comparing my May of 2021 bill versus my January of 2019 bill, the rate was, the rate of increase was a whopping 34.4% with no usage. And I have other months that show comparisons as well. Also, as far as usage goes, when I purchased the house, it was $3.36 per thousand. And the current rate, it's $4.20 per thousand. That's a 25% increase, and they want another increase. Also, I've, I've got to complain about the fact that everybody pays the same wastewater rate, I assume, in my neighborhood. I think the wastewater rate should be based on your usage, as it is in, uh, Western New York where my primary residence is. I think, I don't think it's fair that, uh, people with low usage should have to pay a higher wastewater rate. And the third thing I'd like to complain about is, uh, Carolina Water is the only utility bill that I actually mail a check to. Every credit card company, every utility I have, other than, uh, Carolina Water, I pay, uh, out of a draft out of my bank, but they charge a processing fee, which is, I think, ridiculous. I could see if you were paying by credit card, they charge you a fee. But for paying out of your checking account, there should be no fee in costs. And yet they send emails complaining about the mail that, that, uh, checks are received late. Well, drop the, uh, payment fee and I'll be more than happy to pay online.
All right, Mr. Karamanian, you have come to the end of your two minutes, so please wrap up your testimony.
Again, I'd just like to stress that, uh, I strongly oppose this rate increase. It's, 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 uh, well above the rate of inflation, and I think there should be a price rollback.
All right, uh, Mr. Karamanian, let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the applicant.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, anything from the public staff?
Questions.
All right, uh, commissioners, questions for the witness? All right, Mr. Karamanian, we have nothing further for you this afternoon. Thank you very much for your time, sir, and for your testimony today. We appreciate your being here with us.
Thank you.
You may step down and be excused.
Thanks.
All right, um, at this point in the hearing, we are going to take a brief break for, uh, the sake of our, uh, court reporter. So it's 3:05 now. We will go off the record. We will go back on at, uh, 3:15, back on at 3:15. Counsel, please mute your lines and turn off your cameras. Thank you.
Yeah, is she asking for last year's budget versus this year's budget, just to see how it's changed? Okay. That's, okay.
Mr. Drennan, you are unmuted. Please mute your line. All right, let's go back on the record, please. Mr. McCoy, if you would, unmute your next witness.
Hello?
All right, uh, would you please, uh, identify yourself for the record?
Uh, Lucas Medwell.
All right, Mr. Medwell, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, um, Mr. McCoy, you may proceed, or Mr. Little, you may proceed.
Mr. Mike, uh, Attorney Monterey is going to be taking the remaining witnesses in this session.
Mr. Medwell, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Uh, I can hear you loud and clear. So what is your address and subdivision?
My address is 14801 Palmerall Lane, uh, Pineville, North Carolina. And that is the Winghurst neighborhood.
All right, thank you. And, uh, are you a customer of Carolina Water?
Yes, I do. I receive, um, residential water service and residential wastewater service, um, but not stormwater. And that has been the case, uh, for the five years I've lived here.
Perfect. Thank you. And, uh, you can proceed with the rest of your testimony.
Thank you. Um, CWS's rates are already far too high. For example, in June 21, my household used just 2, 2,300 gallons. My bill was $119.42. That's 80- My bill was a hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-two cents. That's eighty-seven eighty-three, just to be connected, twenty-nine seventy for the water I actually consumed, and a two-twenty-five fee for paying online. That's an absurdly high bill, and because so much of it is fixed cost, I can't even save money by changing my behavior to save water. In contrast, I have a good friend that lives a ten-minute walk from my home, but on the other side of the road in Charlotte proper. I have his water bill here. He used twenty-two forty-four gallons the same month, almost the same as I did, but he paid just forty-five dollars and thirty-four cents for this amount. Sixty-two percent lower than what I paid. The fixed cost was only twenty-twenty-seven, or seventy-seven percent lower than what I'm forced to pay. Carolina Water Service has already raised rates three times since I've been here, November seventeen, March nineteen, and April twenty twenty. So compared to when I moved here, the flat fee for water is up twenty-nine percent, sewer is up thirty-nine percent, price per gallon of water is up twenty-nine percent, and price per gallon of sewer is up fifty-eight. In contrast, the stormwater bill I paid directly to the city has been stable the entire time. My community cannot handle further increases. This why, this is why I recommend that not only should this rate increase be rejected, but also NCUC and Charlotte Water should actually use their power to acquire CWS and replace it and provide my community with the city water that most of Mecklenburg County gets to enjoy. I don't understand why this corporation has been given a literal monopoly to siphon profits out of our community. They add absolutely no value, and there's a perfectly viable public alternative. My neighborhood wants our water and sewer from City of Charlotte the way our storm water already is. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Medwell, let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the applicant.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, question from public staff.
Uh, just one clarifying. Uh, Mr. Medwell, you've mentioned, uh, both you and a friend of yours who's a Charlotte resident had about the same sort of gallon or just water usage. I don't know if I got the number right. Did you say it's, uh, twenty-two, twenty-two hundred and four? Or I just want to make sure I have the gallon usage right.
I used, um, twenty-three-ten, EU twenty-two forty-four.
All right, thank you. Uh, no further questions from public staff.
All right, questions from commissioners. All right, Mr. Medwell, we have no questions for you this afternoon. Uh, you may step down and be excused. Thank you very much for your testimony to us today.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCoy, would you please unmute the next witness?
Uh, yes, Nathan Hartley.
All right, uh, Mr. Hartley, do you affirm that your testimony shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. Witnesses, the public staffs.
Great. Uh, Mr. Hartley, can I get your address and subdivision?
Uh, yes, one-four-three zero-zero Blue Granite Road in Pineville, North Carolina. And I am a CWS sewer and water customer.
Great. And what was the subdivision that you live in?
Uh, it is Woodside Falls.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And you can, uh, proceed with your testimony.
Yes, so much like the, uh, previous, uh, person who spoke, I live in unincorporated Mecklenburg County, uh, literally one hundred or so feet from Charlotte proper. Um, the, much like the previous person said, the rate increases are not warranted. I've lived here since two thousand sixteen, but I've lived in Charlotte my whole life, but in, at this location, um, I'm raising a family here. So I'm seeing, since I've lived here, three increases. Um, so that's something I can expect to see over the next thirty years. So are we going to see, you know, anywhere from fifteen, ten to fifteen increases over that time? Um, I think that CWS needs to have more transparency over what they are doing with this money. Why do we have a connection fee every single month? Power doesn't do that. Um, why, you know, what, speaking of power, Duke Energy puts together really nice infographics on what you can do better. Again, we've been trying to do a lot to, to change our, our usage, which is about, uh, last month was a hundred and thirty-five dollars, twenty-twenty total was fifteen nineteen paid to the company. Um, I, you know, it just makes, you know, they, here's how you can change to LED light bulbs, all right? Here's how you can change to low-flow faucets. But yet, like many of these other people have said, we haven't made, even if you make these changes, your base rate is still an obscene amount. Um, so if I plan to live here, do I really want to pay this obscene amount? No, but we're kind of forced into it, even though we could run a pipe to Charlotte. So I agree, I would really love Charlotte water to purchase. Take this off your hands, but I see that we're a cash cow. Um, all of us residents are. No matter if you live in Dune, Brevard, Apex, New Bern, Morehead City, Kernersville, Sapphire, Deep Gap, um, Pineville, it's, um, it is not fair. It is really just not fair, and it's inappropriate, and I want to express my displeasure with CWS and their practices. And that's what I have to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hartley. Let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the applicant.
No questions, thank you.
Right, public staff.
Uh, just one clarifying. Uh, Mr. Hartley, you'd mentioned that you, I might have this incorrect, that you have been either in Charlotte or just your property since twenty-six months. Want to make sure just about the length of.
Correct, yeah. I've lived in Charlotte my entire life. I've lived at this property at Woodside Falls since two thousand and fifteen, yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, no further questions.
All right, questions from the commissioners. All right, Mr. Hartley, uh, we have no further questions for you. You may, uh, step down and be excused. Thank you very much, sir, for your testimony today.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCoy, you may unmute the next witness.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Gary.
All right. Good afternoon, Ms. Gary. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, you may proceed, Mr. Magrera.
Uh, Ms. Gary, uh, could you give me your address and subdivision?
The address is one-one-two Mountains Boulevard, Lake Lor, and I'm representing Fairfield Mountain Property Owners Association, Inc., um, which is a P, which is a customer of Carolina Water Service, um, and that includes the service areas of Fairfield Mountain, Apple Valley, uh, also known as Rumbling Bald, uh, Highland Shore Subdivision, and Laurel Mountain Estates.
Okay, great. And, and so I take it, obviously from what you just said, the group that you're representing is a customer of CWS, Carolina Water. Are, are you yourself a Carolina Water customer?
I am not. I'm representing the POA.
Okay, uh, all right, please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, first, thank you to the commission for the opportunity to speak today. Um, and while we do appreciate the process in place regarding notice and the ability to voice concerns, uh, the information provided in the notice announcement did not provide the appropriate data to justify the rates that have been proposed for two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, considering the number of previously approved double-digit percentage increases from year to year, we consider it imperative that CWS be required to account for the revenue that has already been generated. So a typical increase due to inflation could be justifiable, even up to five percent. However, the water and sewer rates well exceed the projected Consumer Price Index and Construction Cost Index. If budgets are being followed and reserves for capital improvements are being appropriately funded, there should be no reason for repeated increases of this magnitude. We are respectfully requesting that the commission decline the increased proposal.
All right, Ms. Gary, uh, let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the applicant.
No questions, thank you.
Public staff.
No questions from the public staff.
All right, commissioners. All right, Ms. Gary, we have nothing further for you. Uh, you may step down and be excused. Thank you very much for your testimony before us this afternoon.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCoy, call the next, uh, witness, please.
Hello?
All right, please identify yourself.
Hello, John Foster, F O S T E R.
Um, I am having a, sir, I need you to speak up and re-identify yourself, please.
John Foster, F O S T E R.
All right, Mr. Foster, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, uh, Mr. Magrera, you may proceed.
Mr. Foster, what is your address and subdivision?
I'm at, uh, two-five-one-four Country Club Drive in Hampstead, North Carolina, and our subdivision is Belvedere.
Great. And are you a customer of Carolina Water?
Yes, I am.
And are you receiving just water, just sewer, or do you receive both services from Carolina Water?
Just water.
Please proceed with your testimony.
Okay. I'm opposed to the, uh, proposed rate increase. Um, I've been a customer since two thousand and three, and, um, I have some historical information. So in January two thousand and eleven, the base charge for the system or for us was fourteen dollars and eighty-three cents, and for a thousand gallons of water, the rate was four dollars and forty-eight cents. In January twenty twenty-one, the base charge is twenty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents, and the per thousand gallon rate is eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. So it's a ninety-five percent increase in the base rate. You think about that, ninety-five percent over ten years. And the water, uh, rate increase is eighty-four point five percent increase. Now, nobody listening here, except maybe the attorneys and the executives for Carolina Water, get anywhere near that kind of pay increase. Um, there's a significant number of other Carolina Water customers. I would say there's probably three or four thousand customers in the Belvedere uh, subdivision. All of them experience sub-quality water. And what I mean by sub-quality, it's very turbid, and the pressure does fluctuate. It stains the sinks, the toilets, et cetera. Um, many people I know have installed whole-house, uh, filters for, take the sediment out, and as well as reverse osmosis. So we're basically paying for substandard water from a company that's owned by Utilities, Inc., which is obviously a for-profit organization, nothing wrong with that, but the rates of, uh, what we've been paying are just terrible. And, um, I think the only recourse we have is you, the public surf, uh, Utilities Commission, to help us out. So I think you guys need to think about a ninety-five percent increase over ten years and an eighty-four percent and a half increase over ten years. And ask yourself, is it worth it for the customers and the residents of North Carolina? Okay, that's it.
All right, Mr. Foster, let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the applicant.
No questions, thank you.
All right, public staff.
Yeah, just a couple of questions about the water quality issues you flagged. Um, so I think you had mentioned there were issues with the turbidity and pressure of the water, and specifically you'd mentioned that some of the residents have had staining. Uh, I just want to clarify, are those issues that you also are experiencing, or are these just issues that folks have kind of relayed to you?
The, uh, the homeowners association for Belvedere homeowners association, um, is, uh, is the sort of the clearinghouse for all the residents. I'm just calling in on myself. But, yeah, we, we have those problems, uh, here at this location.
And how frequently have you experienced those issues that you sort of flagged?
Well, uh, so we'll go away, let's say, on, uh, you know, it's three-week vacation, and, um, you know, no water usage. And when we come back, uh, you use some water, and it comes out brown for about, you know, three minutes, and then it, uh, slowly it weans itself, you know, back to semi-clear. So, yeah, it's, it's a problem. I mean, yeah, it's a problem.
Uh, have you contacted the company about these issues?
Well, what we've done, uh, the Belvedere homeowners association, when you guys are having public, you know, attended, uh, reviews and comment period, um, we've been there and, you know, representing hundreds of, of customers, and the last time I attended one of those, uh, there were promises made by Carolina Water. Uh, this was probably three, three years ago. Um, and, uh, I'm not sure any of those have been addressed.
And the specific promises were made with regards to sort of the issues that you've kind of flagged?
Turbidity, turbidity and low, uh, water pressure, yeah. It's a, it's a big deal, you know, for people around here. I mean, we're talking about, you know, hundreds and hundreds, you know, of people have this, this issue. It's not, not just me. And I'm hoping later, you know, I know you have, uh, two, uh, some hearings later today. I hope the the president of the Belvedere homeowners association, uh, will be able to chime in with, you know, how many people he's actually, you know, representing. But, you know, at this point, I'm representing myself.
Thank you, and, uh, no further questions.
Thank you.
All right, questions from commissioners for the witness? All right, I'm, I'm not hearing any, so, Mr. Foster, uh, we have nothing further for you this afternoon. Thank you very much, sir, for being here with us today and for your testimony.
Goodbye.
You may step down, sir. All right, um, Mr. McCoy, would you unmute the next witness, please?
Hello?
Good afternoon, sir. Would you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, my name is David Smoke, S M O A K.
All right, Mr. Smoke. You affirm the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. Magrera, you may proceed with your witness.
Mr. Smoke, uh, could you provide your address and subdivision?
Yes, it's, uh, ninety-six Northridge Trail in Sanford. The subdivision is Carolina Trace.
And are you a customer of Carolina Water?
I've been a customer of sewage and water from a CWS for over eleven years.
Great, thank you. And, uh, please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, thank you. I actually have some positive things to say about Carolina Water Service, but unfortunately, in the interest of time, I have to go right into the negative. Uh, I'd like to list the following objections. This accelerated approval schedule is entirely unacceptable. The time between my notice of this rate hike and having to be registered for this public hearing was only one week, and this hearing was another short week thereafter. Residents were traveling or simply having a busy week, their right to speak and be heard by you has been eliminated. I also object to the two-minute time limit mentioned in the email after I registered for this hearing, but was not mentioned in the public docket. I request my comments be entered into the record in its entirety, even if I must submit them in writing after being cut off. Uh, I object to the language of the written notice as being unnecessarily obscure and confusing. I understand how the advantage of combining all the districts serviced by CWS into one notice speeds the process of rate adjustments. However, the individual subdivisions deserve at least a summary sheet explaining directly how the proposed rate increase would affect them specifically. On page six of the notice, there is a line explaining a five-point-five percent water rate increase for Carolina Trace, and on the following page, there is nothing specifying Carolina Trace for the sewer utility service increase, but we are supposed to know in that situation, we fall under the uniform flat rate increase of, uh, fourteen point three-five percent. I guarantee that most of my residents here in Carolina Trace don't even know what the total rate increase is being petitioned. Uh, I object to the proposal of CWS to absorb the payment processing fees into our base service charges, unless they can demonstrate that this action will be provided at a cost savings to all the customers. The base charges are supposed to cover the costs and profits of providing water and sewage services. If CWS starts expanding what is covered by those base charges, then they are also able to expand their profit on those services to justify further base charge increases. This may not be a bad thing for either them or us customers financially, but should be demonstrated mathematically. Finally, I would like to object to the lack of communication from CWS. Uh, last year, I asked our CWS regional operations manager for two items. I should clarify that I'm the president of the Carolina Trace Association, which is a representational organization for the sixteen-hundred homes in Carolina Trace. Uh, the first thing I asked for was a map of our sewage lines and manholes that we paid for in a robotic survey several years ago. I explained that my community still has eight hundred empty lots, and that a map of our sewage lines would greatly help our empty lot owners when trying to plan for development of. and that a map of our sewage lines would greatly help our empty lot owners when trying to plan for development of their property. I also asked for a plan to renovate or update our service lines, since my residents complained so much about the cost of our water. Then I could at least give them a possible plan to invest in. I have not received either items I asked for, and developers continue to encounter unforeseen obstructions when trying to develop our empty lots. And while we have been receiving a system improvement charge on our monthly bills, there's never been a plan or cost attached to that charge to explain how that money is being spent or for how long we will pay it. Sorry, I've got one more thing. In closing, I fully understand that the financing of private utilities is very different than the financing of public utilities that are subsidized by local taxes or bond sales. I would ask that CWS communicate better with us on how to lower our costs, not just the ways to reduce water consumption, but ways to avoid the never-ending march of their base service charges ever upwards. I know where you, I know we are in a world of increasing inflation. It's in the news all the time, and CWS's labor and other costs will inevitably continue to rise. However, it is the highest frustration that I hear from my residents that even when they are gone for the entire month of service, but their space charges of over ninety dollars must still be paid to cover the cost and profit of CWS operations. I would finally like to ask the Utilities Commission itself to speak on behalf of us taxpayers serviced by private utility companies. When or if the federal infrastructure spending plan is finally approved, I would hope that some of those funds will be allocated for us residents serviced by private utilities and not all spent on municipal water projects. I understand that aging utility infrastructure is an issue across our state and the entire nation, but please don't forget about us. Thank you for this time and your service on behalf of our state.
All right, Mr. Smoke, let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the applicant.
No questions.
All right, public staff.
No questions from the public staff.
All right, commissioners. All right, Mr. Smoke, we have nothing further for you. Thank you very much, sir, for your time today and for your testimony on these issues. You may step down and be excused.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a good day.
All right, Mr. McCoy, would you please unmute the next witness?
Yes, my name is Paul Beckton.
All right, Mr. Beckton, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Magherera, you may proceed. You're muted, sir.
Paul. Apologies about that. Mr. Beckton, could you provide your address and subdivision?
I live at one-three-four Carefree, which is one word, Lane, Morehead City, North Carolina. I'm in the Carefree, excuse me, the Hamlet Place HOA, but that's within the Brandywine community.
Sorry, I don't know why I muted again. Mr. Beckton, are you a Carolina Water customer?
Yes, for water and wastewater service.
Thank you. And you can proceed with your testimony.
So my fiance and I have not lived as long in this area compared to some of the other residents in different areas. But we have lived in Morehead City for three years now. Back when we were on just the Morehead City water, our water bill was probably only, that which it did includes trash, was only probably about forty dollars a month. Then we moved into Brandywine, not knowing the outrageous water cost and wastewater cost through Carolina Water Service. And now my bill is ranging from anywhere from a hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. The problem that I have is not necessarily fully with the cost. I definitely think that the cost is completely outrageous, but I think it's the ratio of cost to quality that really frustrates me. I have a whole-house water filter, water softener, as well as filters in my refrigerator, and still use a Brita filter, and the water quality is still horrendous. In the back of my toilets, it actually collects sludge to where the, it actually can affect the flushing and the use of the toilet. I actually have contacted Carolina Water Services last year. This was during the pandemic outbreak, which was larger down here, and he did not come into the residence to view these. He just told me that it is normal and that if I didn't have a water softener, that the sludge would not be there, even though I live on the coast and I do not know anybody that does not have to have one to get normal quality water. I'm just very against the water price hike in regards to nothing being done in terms of increasing the water quality. The last couple of months, we've also gotten notifications that there are actually been found to have harmful ingredients in the water treatment plant within our subdivision. And so if the water quality continues to decrease, there should be no reason for the water prices to increase, in my opinion.
All right, Mr. Beckton, you've come to the end of your two minutes. Let me see if there are questions for you from counsel, beginning with the applicant.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, public staff.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So I think at the tail end of your testimony, you'd sort of mentioned, and I don't think I caught all of it, but there were some issues sort of in the system, not at your house. Could you sort of clarify what you meant towards the end of your testimony there?
Yes, so we purchased the house in two thousand and nineteen. It was already set up to have a whole-house water filter because the water quality in our neighborhood is horrendous. And even with this filter, which I change every three to six months, there is sludge formation that forms with standing water in the back of our commodes. Along with the smell of the water in any sink in the house is horrendous. It smells like something is decomposing in the sink or in the faucet.
Got, got you. And I recall you'd sort of had a repair worker from CWS who had been in contact with you, and that individual had said basically, because of COVID reasons, you know, couldn't come into the property and had sort of said that the water softener was the issue. Have those issues continued?
Yes, they've continued, and because of that lack of really any positive or constructive advice, I, you know, there, I feel like they, my hands are tied behind my back to get good water quality in my neighborhood because of the monopoly that Carolina Water Service has over the neighborhood. The City of Morehead will actually not even take on Brandywine because of the issues with, from what I understand, with Carolina Water Service and the water treatment plant within our neighborhood.
Thank you. No further questions from public staff.
All right, any questions for the witness from commissioners? All right, Mr. Beckton, we have nothing further for you. Thank you for your testimony today. You may step down and be excused.
Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. McCoy, please unmute the next witness.
Chair, that is it.
All right, it looks like at this time we have come to the end of the list of witnesses appearing to testify before us in this afternoon hearing. With that, we will be adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Let's go off the record, please.